Greetings and welcome to the January 21st, 2020 meeting of the Seattle City Council. It is 2:02 PM. I'm Lisa Herbold, President Pro Tem of the Council. Will the Clerk please call a roll?
Lewis?
Here.
Morales?
Here.
Peterson?
Sawat?
Here.
Strauss?
Present.
Juarez?
Here.
Council President Pro Tem Herbold?
Here.
Six present.
Thank you. So first up on the agenda is presentations, and there are no presentations today. Next up is the approval of the minutes. The minutes of the January 6th, 2020 city council meetings have been reviewed. If there is no objection, the minutes will be signed. Hearing no objections, the minutes are being signed. And I'd like to recognize that we have been joined by Councilmember Alex Peterson. Next up, we have the adoption of the referral calendar. If there's no objection, the introduction and referral calendar will be adopted. Seeing and hearing no objection, the introduction and referral calendar is adopted. Next, we have approval of the agenda. If there is no objection, the agenda will be adopted. Hearing no objection, the agenda is adopted. Next, we have on the agenda, public comment. And public comment will be accepted for 20 minutes. And I'm going to just do a quick review of the number of people signed up. Given that we have 51 people signed up for public comment, public comment today will be limited to one and a half minutes of public comment. If the speaker's comment exceeds one and a half minutes, the Clerk will turn off the microphone. If we still have people signed up to speak at the end of the 20 minutes, I will consult with my colleagues and we'll see if we can extend the public comment period. Speakers are asked to begin their comments by identifying themselves and the specific agenda item that they would like to speak to. And with that, I'm going to begin reading the names into the record. And I will read two names at a time. There are multiple microphones. If you could line up at both mics as I read your name, I would appreciate it. That way, we can move things a little bit more smoothly. And we will start with Shakaru Sheela representing a group, followed by Farzana Khan.
How many minutes for a group?
How many minutes for a group? Good question. We'll do three minutes for a group.
Okay. My name is S. Sharu Sheela. I am an economist who studies equity and development in South Asia. My aim is to clarify confusions about the NRC and CAA, which may help council members in their deliberations on Resolution Number 31926. Though I'm a professor at the University of Washington-Bottles, I would like to note that I speak here in a private capacity as an Indian immigrant and a Seattle resident. Nothing I say here represents the perspective of the university or its units. One of the justifications offered for the NRC is that India needs to handle a massive problem of illegal immigration. Official data from the UN Global Migration Database and from the Indian Census indicate this is not the case. But in the interest of time, I will move to the way in which the National Register can be used to strip citizenship even from people who were born in India and have lived there their whole lives. Unlike the United States, India does not provide automatic citizenship based on birth. Of the three modes by which one can try to become a citizen, birth, descent, and naturalization, changes to the law have made it easier to seek citizenship based on descent and religious origin, and harder to seek it based on birth within the country. For a child born in India today, the government requires up to two generations of proof of citizenship and ancestry to establish birth-based citizenship. Such records would be difficult for many of us to produce. They are an immense hurdle for the poorer half of the Indian population, many of whom who cannot read, do not own formal property, or have bank accounts, and who have been poorly served by the kinds of institutions that produce formal documents. It should be noted that Indian Muslims are already on average poorer, and the children of Muslim immigrants in particular will have a difficult time with such proofs compared to Hindus and others, who will be granted a reprieve due to the CAA. This is the context within which the CAA would now add measures that would make it more difficult for members of one religion, Islam, to access the alternate pathway of naturalization for gaining citizenship. The CAA says that if you're a member of a major religion, recognize that it's not Islam, it will become easier and quicker for you to become naturalized citizen if you migrated from Afghanistan, Pakistan, or Bangladesh. The government's argument is that Muslims can go elsewhere, that by virtue of their religion, there are other Muslim nations that might accept them. But note again, this does not merely apply to people asking to cross the border, which would already be discriminatory, but to Muslims who have lived in India for generations, who will now face additional discrimination in accessing citizenship on the basis of their religion. The government has not provided any explanation of the choice of Muslim-majority nations, or for why Sri Lanka and Myanmar, which have also seen religious persecution of Hindus, are not covered by the CIA. The CAA has been compared to the Lautenberg Amendment in the U.S., which provides a fast track for some religions for refugee status. The difference is that the Lautenberg Amendment applies only to refugee status, and that it functions in a legal environment of guaranteed birthright citizenship. So the effect of the CAA and NCR together is quite distinct, and it results in discrimination. Thank you.
Following Farzana Khan is Sana Alam.
Hi, my name is Farzana, and as a Muslim woman, I'm here to support both the resolutions on agenda today. So CAA benefits Hindu, Sikh, Jain, Buddhist, Christian, and Parsi refugees from Afghanistan, Pakistan, Bangladesh, who sought refuge in India explicitly leaving out Muslims. For instance, the Rohingya of Myanmar, who have faced genocide. This has outraged not only Muslims, but all those Indian citizens who believe in the secular fabric of constitution. While we support India being a welcoming country for refugees, we do not want it to be discriminatory. Instead, the first step should be for India to ratify various UN treaties, like the UN Refugee Convention and the Global Compact for Migration. Besides this, so basically, CAA, when you combine with NRC, with the Home Minister of India, has said multiple times that it's going to happen, the nationwide registry of citizenship, it's going to be a lethal weapon. The NRC has already been implemented in Assam, which actually left 2 million people out of that. And out of those 2 million, I think almost 1.5 million are basically Hindus. And to rescue those Hindus, to save their own wood banks, they came up with CAA. So what's going to happen is those half a million people who are Muslims, now they have no place to go to than the detention centers. Even though the PM of India has said there is no detention center, but basically, there are seven detention centers already. 28 people have already died in them. And I cannot believe it. It's 2020, and we're talking about, you know, like another possible Holocaust. You know, we have all seen the history, how it's going to happen. And the people, the 2 million people who did not make it to NRC, there were those people not necessarily didn't have documents. There were a family of former president of India whose family did not make it to NRC. There were two Army veterans who did not make it to NRC. There was a former Chief Minister of Assam, who was a Muslim, and she did not make it to NRC. So these are not the people who were illiterate or were poor, who couldn't bring up enough documents to prove their citizenship. But basically--
Thank you. Your time is up. Appreciate it. Thank you. Following Sana Alam, we have Arul Mozi Pal Asami.
Hello. Good afternoon. My name is Sana, and I'm here to support both the resolutions on the agenda today. I have been living in the Seattle area for around 11 years now. I love this part of Pacific Northwest and the fact that how all of us Seattleites are gearing up against CAA and NRC. So I'm not going to talk a lot about it, because a lot has been spoken on CAA and NRC. I want to say that the way Indian government is ruthlessly pushing it forward to implement CAA and NRC, it is bound to create havoc. We are already seeing glimpses of it. We see that there's a country-wide protest going on in India. The students are on the streets, people from all walks of life are joining them. There are women who have been stationed at Chaien Bagh in Delhi, which is the nation's capital. They have been there for many days now. We are seeing a clear contempt of these nationwide protests. There have been cases where students have been brutally beaten up by police. Some of the students ended up losing their fingers, becoming emputees for life. There have been cases where, there was a case where one of the student, he ended one of his left eye. He was blinded in one of the eye. There are cases where students were picked up from the hostel dorms, ripped naked, kept in the police custody, and communal slurs rested them. We also, we are also seeing that minority, Muslim minorities are being targeted. Their shops are ransacked, their homes vandalized. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Following Arul Mozi Pal Asami is Sharman Hassan.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Arul Muri. I live in Redmond for the past few years. I was born into a backward community, which is designated as a Hindu, into one of the middle layers of the graded discrimination of the caste pyramid. So this community was barred from education, but held some land. So that made my father the first graduate of the entire ancestry. That made me a collective privilege-holding person who comes and speaks in front of you. So as the caste discrimination layer goes down, access to food, shelter, and education is a painful struggle, not only for a respectful life, even for a respectful death. This is extremely difficult for oppressed communities and scheduled castes and scheduled tribes to get hold of the legal documents that are demanded. People like me, who were born in the '80s, the rural part of India, do not have even birth certificates, because the documentation of the government was not widespread. To insist again, majority of the population was denied from education. So demanding documents like birth certificates and land ownership documents for one's citizenship would be not very accessible for the non-land-owning, underprivileged, and marginalized communities. The NRC process rests the decision on the citizenship on the hands of the caste-privileged bureaucrats, who have time, again, weaponized state missionary to take their caste hegemony forward. We hear that a council member here might hold the resolution for today and not allow voting today. It is disrespectful for the people who made time to come for voting yes to the resolution today. I urge the council to vote today yes, and please. Thank you.
Following Sharman Hassan, we have Deepa Sevarajan.
And if it's okay, I'm going to come up as a group.
Okay. That'll be three minutes then.
Do you have a group with her?
If there is actually a group, though.
Yeah, they're coming up.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
These are the words that my people have been branded by the ruling party of India. When I hear these words, a part of me dies. I ache for the conditions of my people, who have no protection from a state that only wants to exterminate us. I am a Bangladeshi Muslim, and as I hear these words, I hear most poignantly the drumbeat of genocide. Bengalis as a people have survived four genocides in our region, from the colonial-imposed famine in Bengal, where over 3 million people died from starvation, to the violence of partition, to our independence from Pakistan, which led to another 3 million people and over 400,000 women raped. This was the largest instance of genocidal rape in history. When it comes to genocide, the time to act is now. I am here to give my urgent testimony and urge the city council to vote on this today. We cannot postpone a vote. If we postpone a vote, that means that we are giving power to the right-wing people who want to quell dissent and silence the minorities across South Asia that are fighting for our lives right now. Detention camps are being built right now. My name is Sharman Hassan, and I'm the political director of a national organization called Equality Labs, and we represent South Asian minorities across the diaspora. The importance of the city council passing this resolution cannot be overstated. When genocidal campaigns begin, one important intervention is international condemnation. We see you as a body of people that will stand on the right side of history. We really need you to pass this resolution today. Because of this resolution, Seattle has a unique opportunity to lead the moral consensus and the global outcry against the CAA. In light of these concerns, we really hope that this resolution will be a sign of assurance that the entirety of the South Asian-American community is safe in Seattle. The troubling turn for genocide in our homelands make us relive the old horrors, and it is vital to know that Seattle is a sanctuary for South Asian-American communities that are standing in solidarity with millions who are protesting the Citizenship Amendment Act, the NRC, and the NRA. The CAA is terrifying. There is absolutely no grounds by which any one of conscious can support it. The law creates an unconstitutional religious-based criteria to grant citizenship to select immigrants. The CAA is an integral part of the Modi government's process of creating a stateless population. It explicitly targets Muslims, and it will impact all vulnerable communities. I urge you, on behalf of millions of my people, to pass this resolution today.
Thank you. Following Deepa Sevarajan, we have Ibrahim Mogul.
My name is Deepa Sevarajan, and I'm a member of the Seattle LGBTQ Commission. I have here a letter from our commission stating our support for Resolution 31926. So when the Modi government updated the National Register of Citizens in Assam, out of the 2 million people left out of the register, at least 2,000 were transgender people. LGBTQ people are uniquely vulnerable to the high burden of proof to verify their citizenship, because they may be estranged from their families, or they may only have documentation that lists the sex they were assigned at birth. And because of the Citizenship Amendment Act, these people are in danger of being rendered stateless in India. Meanwhile, in Kashmir, the Indian security forces have instituted something akin to martial law and implemented a communications blockade for months on end. And queer and trans Kashmiris have been isolated from their communities online or in the rest of India and abroad. The reason that we, as the Seattle LGBTQ Commission, have taken a stance on this is because we recognize that human rights abuses in India are a blow to marginalized people everywhere, including in Seattle. Muslims face discrimination and violence in Seattle. Dalits face discrimination and violence in Seattle. Sikhs face discrimination and violence in Seattle. Bangladeshis and Pakistanis face discrimination and violence in Seattle. By passing this resolution today, council would send a strong message that discrimination and violence based on race, caste, nationality, religion, gender, sexual orientation, disability, or class are not tolerated here in Seattle, and that Seattle stands for human rights locally and globally. Thank you.
Following Ibrahim Mogul, we have Prashant Nima.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Ibrahim Mogul. I'm here to support both resolutions today. While we support India being a welcoming country for refugees, we do not want it to be discriminatory. I'm here with my two-year-old to urge all of you council members to please vote on this resolution today unanimously and approve it. Why? We observed MLK Day yesterday. So Civil Rights Act week, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. We are tied in a single garment of destiny. Whatever effects one directly affects all of us indirectly." Let me give you some data about, you know, what injustice happening in India. So I'll go back to 2007. The Indian society right now has been discriminating against on the religion basis, and it is, again, infiltrated by the BJP government and RSS, which is the extremist right-wing organization in India. When I was trying to buy a home back in 2007, 10, like eight out of 10 times, they refused to sell me a home because I'm a Muslim. And imagine if they passed this bureaucratic law of NRC where they are giving power to all the bureaucrats to decide on what paper basis and religion basis the citizenship will be decided. It will be chaos. It will be another genocide. So I really urge all the council members to look into it and approve this resolution today. Me and my two-year-old is here. We are hoping for the justice, and you will make the my-dream-speech of MLK true today by taking the steps. So I urge all of you. Thank you.
Following Prashant Nima, we have Menda Kumar Balushamy.
Hello. My name is Prashant, and I am here to support the resolution on today's agenda, both of them, and I hope that you guys will vote today. While we support India becoming a welcoming country for refugees, we do not want it to be discriminatory. I was born into an upper-caste Hindu family. This means that my family always had the privilege of access to education, documentation, and our existence, wealth, and power. Coming to America is one such privilege, which is why, in the Indian diaspora, the representation of caste of India is upside-down and overwhelmingly upper-caste. I am from the top 10% of the country, where 80% of people suffer severe deprivation of both social and material wealth. This means that the laws passed recently in India do not affect me or my family in any negative way. From my ivory towers, I have the privilege to ignore the dark underbelly of the manifestation of these laws and processes. What issues, I can say. Show the documents, and nothing wrong will happen to you. Why would I oppose a government policy that will benefit me and my kind by giving them even more voice in the system? I would even come here and preserve my power. I would gaslight each one of these speakers before me, and then try to trick the council by misguiding narrative about CAA that it's just meant to help people from neighboring countries. I would even show you figures from 1941 to 2020 without telling you that there was mass human migration between this time. But I want to be a better human being, and so that's why I want everybody to support this resolution. Thank you.
Following Menda Kumar Balushamy, we have, I believe it's Archana Sunil.
I'm Nanda Kumar Balushamy. As an Indian Tamil, I grew up watching the ethnic conflict in Sri Lanka, and still I'm heartbroken how it ended in Tamil genocide. With that knowledge, looking at the current event unfolding in India gives me the conclusion that genocide is strictly a phenomenon of modern era, linked to state-building and nationalism. And I'm afraid it's going to happen soon in India as well. Look at the NRC, which deliberately discriminates Muslims by religions and Sri Lankan Tamil refugees who live in India for more than three decades, and making them harder are probably like, virtually impossible for them to obtain their citizenship in India. Reminds me 1948 Siloan Citizenship Act in Sri Lanka, which discriminated Indian origin Tumbles. 1956 Singalese Only Act in Sri Lanka that divided the people of Sri Lanka as Singalese and Tamil, same like the CAA going to divide the harmonious Indian population into dominant Hindu and subordinated Muslim group. Members, I would like to insist, the socioeconomic inequality discriminations and systemic segregations are one of the major drivers that may force the human nature into genocidal path. Dehumanizing the Muslim Sasuke too reminds me, quote-unquote, in Sri Lanka, how Tamil people are called. For Jews, it's vermin, and for Rwandans, cockroaches. Dehumanizing one of the attributes of genocide justifies the physical extermination of subordinated group. So, my dear council member--
Thank you.
--it's all there. It's just time--
Please wrap up.
--that India may slip into the genocide. I request you vote the resolutions and stop India stepping into genocidal path. Thank you.
Thank you. Following, I believe it's Archana Sunil, we have Ram Dixit.
Thank you for this opportunity to express my opposition to Member Sawant's Resolution 319266. This council is being misinformed and misled by false information, and the passage of this resolution will be received as bigotry against Hindus, Christians, Sikhs, Parsis, Buddhists, Jains, all persecuted minorities. First, is it not an ethics violation for this council to use public resources to deliberate on matters of another country? I don't need to remind you that Seattle has a long list of its own issues to work on, over 12,000 who are homeless, drugs, education, like many other city councils do. The CAA and NRC are unrelated. And no, Ms. Sawant, neither will strip 200 million Muslims of citizenship, as you have falsely claimed. CAA, in fact, gives citizenship to 37,000 religiously persecuted minorities, as I listed earlier. No different than our own Lautenberg Amendment, which was even recently touted by Pramila Jaipal. Likewise, the NRC is simply a registry of Indian citizens, much like any other country. NRC has not even been implemented yet. And if it is, the government has an exhaustive list of ways to prove one's citizenship, not just a father's birth certificate. So on what basis are you spreading this fear and these lies? The CAA is now a law in India. Your illogical, baseless lies are not going to reverse the laws of India, and if anything, will jeopardize the bilateral trade with USA, especially with Washington. India was the 10th-largest export market and 16th-largest source of imported goods--
Thank you.
No, I'm speaking as a group.
Okay. Please, in the future, if you're speaking as a group, let me know in advance. And just to be clear, if you are speaking as a group, you forego your opportunity to speak again. So if any folks--
Yeah, they're not speaking.
--are speaking as a group, I will need to take their name off--
No, they're not. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. India was the 10th-largest export market and the 16th-largest source of imported goods in 2018 for Washington alone. Do you really want to mess with this based on lies? I have provided each of you with information on the CAA and NRC--
Please.
This is wrong. The online petition against this resolution signed, so I have provided you with information on CAA and NRC, which will be apparently given to you after the meeting. The online petition against this resolution, signed by over 3,000 Indian-Americans, was emailed to all the council members. Ms. Sawant, your level of misinformation, lack of historical perspective to the CAA, and apathy towards those 37,000 persecuted minorities is alarming, to say the least. God bless America.
At this point, we have exceeded-- At this point, we've exceeded the time allotted for public comment. I'm going to consult with my colleagues and look to extend the time for public comment. I would ask that we not clap in between speakers, so that we can hear from more people. We've only heard from 10 people of, signed up to speak, a total of 51 people. So in order to get through the list, I want your, I would like, I request your cooperation in making sure that we stick to the time limits, which are now going to be one minute for individuals, since, again, assuming my colleagues agree to extend the timeline. One minute for individuals, two minutes for a group. Again, if you can identify, I know that sometimes people are coming up as a group. I don't know necessarily that that means that you wish to speak as a group, so if you could let me know in advance, I'd appreciate that as well. And I'd like to propose another 30 minutes to do public comment, if folks agree. Is that right?
That's fine. Okay. Saying no objections. We will extend the timeline to, it's now 2:30, to 3 o'clock, for 30 minutes of public testimony. Thank you.
We're speaking as a group, ma'am.
Thank you. And you are Ram Dixit?
Yes.
Followed by Javed Sikhandar. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council. I speak to you today urging you to vote against Councilmember Sawant's resolution condemning India and its recent CAA law. I'm a citizen of the United States. I immigrated to this country back in 1970. I've lived all over the nation, and I'm proud to call Seattle home for the past 22 years. Even after all of these years, I visit India two to three times a year. I have friends, I have family, and I stay in touch. I am fully aware of what's happening in India today. While it's absolutely important for our city, our state, and our country to be welcoming to all, regardless of race, religion, or creed, Miss Sawant's resolution is misplaced and based on distortions. As you may all know, India was violently partitioned in 1947, but despite that, adopted a pluralistic, multi-ethnic, multi-religious framework, and all of her citizens enjoy equality before law. The other countries created as a result of India's partition adopted Islam as their national religion. They relegated their citizens of any other faith other than Islam to second-class status. They were persecuted. They were discriminated in all spheres of life, including conversions, denying educational and professional opportunities, and in many instances, being brutally murdered. I'm not even going to talk about what happened in Afghanistan. We all know what the Taliban did to the minorities there. The Citizenship Amendment Act that Miss Sawant's resolution condemns was passed by the Indian parliament. It is additive. It gives citizenship to persecuted refugees and minorities from other countries, the dreamers-- Dreamers from those countries. I support Dreamers everywhere on this planet, and those refugees deserve no less. This law is not about stripping anybody of their citizenship. So I stand with Dreamers everywhere. I stand with India's CAA law because it provides a path to citizenship that we are also fighting in this country for the Dreamers who live here. Stand with the Dreamers, support the Dreamers who live in India.
Please wrap up.
And I really hope that the council rejects this proposition. Thank you.
Next, we have Javed Sikander, followed by Azmatthuka Shaikh.
Dear council members, thank you for taking this time today. And I have spoken here last week when we proposed this resolution. As a resident of Seattle area, I'm super proud of this steps the city is taking to denounce this divisive and draconian Citizenship Act, as well as the National Registry in India. As the Amnesty International report that was published recently details, these laws, when implemented, caused significant damage and pain and suffering. As one of my previous speakers said, around 30 people had died already in detention camps in one of the state called Assam. In just one state that is happening, you can imagine when something like this is implemented across India, the bloodshed it can create. While these acts are created to marginalize and divide people, the people of India, as you can see, are uniting. Today, you don't see people with, from one faith, you have people from all faiths here. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Please pass the resolution. Thank you.
If we continue to clap in between speakers, we will not be able to hear from everybody. Okay? I really request respectfully that you do not clap between speakers so we can hear from everybody. Azmatthuka Shaikh will have aftercar. Iftercar, sorry.
I'm Rizwan Samad.
Azmatthuka Shaikh. Okay. All right, we'll move on to Iftercar.
Yeah, that's me. My name is Iftercar, and I'm here to support both the resolutions tabled by Councilmember Shama Sawant. I'm originally from the northeastern Indian state of Assam. I'll state a few facts, not lies. The Assamite people of all religions and castes are opposed to the Citizenship Amendment Act because it goes, because it is discriminatory, goes against the secular fabric of the country, and threatens the culture, language, and traditions of the indigenous people. Six students died in police firing in the state of Assam in December 2019. Of the people who died, there were Hindus, Muslims, and Christians. Internet was banned in the state of Assam for over 10 days. The Prime Minister and the Home Minister keeps claiming that there are no detention centers in the state of Assam, but the fact is, there are already six to seven detention centers. The National Registry Citizens, which is a very flawed process, was recently conducted in the state of Assam.
Please wrap up.
I implore all the council members to please support Councilmembers Shama's resolution.
Thank you. We have Wajid Mohammed, followed by MEA Sir Patar.
Giving my one minute to him. My name is Lavanya Reddy.
So you're speaking as a group?
Yes.
You can take her name off. That's what you said.
Okay, what was your name?
Lavanya Reddy.
Okay, thank you.
Should I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I fall in Shama's district. I vote, I didn't vote for her. So just for a second, forget about everything, just think about that there are so many parents in this, in this community. Imagine that your daughter, 15-year-old daughter, does not come home, and for next couple of days, you don't know what is happening. You can't go to the police because you have no rights. What happens is after fourth, fifth day, you are told that she was converted to Islam, got married off, and you never ever see her again. Just, just think about that. Just put yourself in those shoes. That's exactly what is happening for so many minorities, Hindus, Buddhists, Christians across Pakistan. And that touches me, even the UN report says the same thing. Show me one credible report which shows that Pakistan is treating their minorities nice. Nobody. Pakistan reduced their minorities from 15% to 1.5% in 50 years, which conquistors, conquistators took 200 years to do. So imagine the rage, the rage and the scale at which they have reduced their minorities. Indian government wants to welcome these people. These are really prosecuted people. They are fearing their daughters lost, their brothers killed, their neighbors executed. They are fearing that those countries and that barbarism and coming to India. And these people are just 35,000 people they are giving the citizenship to. We also have a similar amendment called Lautenberg Amendment. Whoever is going to go in support of this amendment, can you state clearly that you oppose Lautenberg Amendment as well because it favors Jews? Bahas from Iran, this doesn't favor Muslims from those countries. So why do we have those laws here and we are criticizing somebody else? Does that make us hypocrite? Think about that when you vote. Also, this resolution is going to stop, it's a humanitarian resolution. It's not going to stop, it should not stop anybody from, from supporting any humanitarian work. Also, there were so many lies which she did not even lead, and we have spread the things. Thank you so much.
MEA Sir Patar will be followed by Raghav Kashuk. MEA?
I was a mayor.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That's very good. So Raghav Kashuk, followed by Sujatha Ramney.
My comrades who went before me covered a lot of important points. I'm just going to stick to three or four points which I want to call out. I completely support the resolutions that Comrade Shava Sawant is proposing today, and I want to state quickly my reasons. There were a couple of points which were brought up. One was about India helping refugees, and we totally support, we really want India to help refugees as well. However, we feel that the way to do that, the first step to do that is to have India ratify UN Refugee Convention, for example, and not pass a discriminatory law like the CAA. Second thing is about NRC, the detention centers. We heard a lot of stories about detention centers. You don't have to take, you can look at what Amnesty Report has to say, which is that Amnesty International did a detailed report of the NRC and its implementation in Assam, and they called it riddled with bias prejudice and arbitrary decision-making, which renders people stateless. That was their words, not mine. So I would urge you to pay attention to the human rights violation as observed not only by people's personal stories, but by what Amnesty International says. The other points I want to make are, well, connection to...
Please wrap up.
Yeah. Connection to local issues, and I really want to point out that I would urge everyone to vote on this issue today because we have so many people who came here who clearly care a lot about the issue, who took time off from their work and came here. So please vote on it today. Thanks.
Sujatha Ramney will be followed by Bhakti Joshi.
We are here as a group. My name is Sujatha Ramney.
I'm sorry, I'm seeing a lot of familiar faces making up this group.
Maybe someone else who hasn't been here can, yeah. I am here to read a statement by Palagumi Sayanath. Sayanath is a Magsese Award-winning journalist. He has written this, and he has sent it to the council, but I want to bring this up in statement today. My name is Palagumi Sayanath, and this is my 40th year as a journalist and reporter. In those four decades, I have not seen protests of the nature and scale that we have now seen in defense of some of the most important values of Indian democracy. The CAA is not just about an attack on India's constitution, it is about the replacement of it, a first, very major step. It dislodges one of its most important foundations by bringing in a religious-based section that is the antithesis of this secular and democratic constitution. It does that by violating the basic principle of equality before law, excluding one religious minority from its provisions. It undermines the entire edifice of the constitution in the process. Conversely, the protesters on the streets are doing much more than resisting one constitutional amendment. Whether all of them articulated that way or not, they are out there in defense of the most basic values of any republican constitution and democracy, that is liberty, equality, and fraternity. The move of the BJP government should indeed shock, but not surprise us. As early as 1947, the parent organization of the BJP, the Rashtriya Swamvayamsevak Sangh, had denounced the about-to-be-adopted Indian constitution. They wanted it to be replaced by the Manusmriti, a Brahmanical text from around 200 CE that codified extreme caste and gender oppression. Now in power, they will indeed gut the constitution based on equality before law, something that they have always despised. I urge you to vote and support Councilwoman Sawant's resolution today. All of us have taken time out, some of us have flown from out of town and made it today. I urge you to not postpone the vote and vote on this today. Thank you.
Following Bhakti Joshi, we have Ifterkar Ali.
I have come here from my home, from my work, because I saw here in the city council hall that people are speaking extravagant lies, and they are preparing a completely distorted view of the ground reality that is in India. I am no reporter, no journalist, nothing, but when I see people speaking lies, I have to come and tell you people that, no, please check this. When I came here for two hours, I'm here, I saw the theatrics downstairs, and they are very much prepared. We as a group, I have come as an individual because I just came to know this. And then, in fact, talking about this, in fact, it gives me an opportunity to talk to you about CAA. You know, kudos to Indian government to pass such a humane law, Citizenship Amendment Act, helps the victims of the partition of India, and it helps people who are facing severe religious atrocities, severe religious persecution just on the name of religion. In Pakistan, the minority community has reduced in 50 years from 23% to 1% Pakistan and Bangladesh put together. If at all, we have to come together to question this government, what happened to your minorities?
Thank you.
And/or should we question the government that is helping these minorities?
I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have Ifterkar Ali, followed by Jagdish Sharma.
By the way, fellow council member, thank you for coming here today and discussing about this important topic. I will just read you guys what Dr. Gregory Stanton, founder of Genocide Watch, addressed to the audience of congressional and government officials on December 12. He said, "The persecution of Muslim in Assam and Kashmir is the stage just before genocide", adding that "stage is extermination, that is what we call a genocide." Dr. Stanton curated the world-famous 10 stages of genocide as a presentation to the US Department of State. The first stage was classification of US versus, us versus them. The second stage, symbolization, named the victim as foreigner. The third stage, discrimination, classified the victim out of the group, accepted for citizenship, so that they had no human right or civil rights of citizens and were discriminated against legality.
Please wrap up. Your time is up. Thank you. Following Jagdish Sharma, we have Santosh Kumar.
My name is Jagdish Sharma, Chair of the Indo-American Friendship Forum, and I am going to speak against the CAA resolution brought by Councilmember Kshama Sawant. Just for your information, CAA does not take away the citizenship of any Indian citizen, including 200 million Muslim citizens. Two thoughts come to my mind. Either the Councilmember Kshama Sawant is totally ignorant about the facts of, or failing prey to the misinformation campaign initiated by some vested interests, which I can see here. I emphasize again that CAA has no implication on the existing citizens of India irrespective of their religious faith and belief. For a diverse and cosmopolitan city like Seattle, which has a history of communal harmony and brotherhood, the resolution may act as a major divisive force, and such resolutions also have a detrimental effect in overall context of the Indo-US relations.
Thank you. Please wrap up.
Thank you very much. So I request the council members to reject this resolution, please.
Thank you. Following Santosh Kumar, we've got Alak Mathur.
I'm Santosh Kumar, residing in University District of Seattle for the last 50 years. I'm working as a physician. I strongly oppose the Resolution Number 31926, and my arguments are as follows. One, the resolution is out of purview of the mission and function of the Seattle City Council. Two, the resolution is an uncalled-for, and what I call a soft missile attack from the government of Seattle against the government of India, and has definite consequences of damaging the harmony and peace of the citizen, not only of Seattle, but of India. Number three, it is inappropriate to bundle and multiple acts and issues in one resolution. Number four, the resolution has serious and overwhelming criminal tone and color, as the proponents of the resolution are giving their concern about the Muslims in India by using the count of 200 million to 250 million with variation of 50 million in error, and they would not allow the counting of the population in India.
Appreciate that. Alak Mathur will be followed by Amjad Shaikh.
Hi, my name is Alok Mathur, and I've lived here in Seattle for the last 44 years, and I would like to present my views against the resolution that City Councilmember Shama Sawant has brought for the Citizenship Amendment Act. For your information, CAA does not take away the citizenship of any Indian citizen, including 200 million Muslim citizens. I strongly believe that either Councilmember Sawant is totally ignorant about facts, or she's being misinformed by certain vested interests. I emphasize again that CAA has no implication on the existing citizens of India irrespective of their religious faith and belief. CAA is going to help all citizens and not just the minorities of India. So I would strongly urge the City Councilmember to reject the proposed resolution, the contents of which are both factually incorrect and hold the potential of disturbing the peace and harmony within the Indian-American community residing in this area. At the end, I would like to add that CAA and NRC are both separate issues, and only the CAA bill has been adopted as a law by the Indian Parliament. NRC is a myth at this point.
Thank you, please wrap up.
Okay, so I would strongly urge that you reject the...
Appreciate it. Following Amjad Shaikh, we have Gus Samdani. As a group, okay.
We are all humans. We are all different, but we are all equal. That's the basic tenet on which the Indian constitution and the Indian democracy was built. This fascist government of India is trying to change that by bringing in this discriminatory law. I urge you all to please vote today in favor of Ms. Shama Sawant's resolution. Thank you.
Samdi? Following Gus Samdani, sorry, we have Shaul Hamdi.
Hi there. My name is Shakir Muhammad Abdul. I'm speaking on behalf of...
I'm speaking on behalf of Samdani. So, yeah, I'm here to support the resolution passed by, proposed by Shama Savant. And it's not just the CAA. I think a lot of time I keep hearing that CAA is for humanity and CAA is for everyone. It's not just the CAA, it's the combination of the CAA and NRC, which is lethal. And I keep hearing only about CAA and no one talks about NRC. It's the combination of these two which is going to strip Muslim with the citizenship, and not only Muslim, the ATs and the Jewish community, everyone will be stripped from citizenship. So I urge you to, like, vote for this resolution and then pass it. Thank you.
And tell me, who were you? Because I didn't catch your name.
We spoke as a group.
And I just want, I need to cross off a name on the list.
Yeah, Samdani goes.
Samdani.
So, Shabul Hamdi, yes? Followed by Tasif Beg.
Hello, my name is Shahul. I am here to support the resolution today. Though, one quick fact is if this is all about the minorities in Bangladesh and other countries, and what about the Muslims lives in the, Muslims being prosecuted in Myanmar and the Hindus being persecuted from Sri Lanka as well? So why they are not included? So this is a clear indication that this is not just about supporting the minorities, this is all about just discriminating the minorities in India. So I urge you, all of you, to support this change today and help us to live in a peace and harmony in India. Thank you.
We have Tasif Beg, I believe it is?
Yeah, that's right. Close enough, close enough.
Cassandra Armstrong, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Tosif Beg. I'm just a middle-class family man leading a humdrum life. But anyway, this issue is so important that I'm here to talk about it. One thing is like, I would like, urge you guys to vote in support of the resolution that Ms. Savant has brought in, because I believe this is like, will be a small step for man, but a giant leap for humankind. And I want, I know Seattle is the one who sets breakthrough paths, you know? So I really want you guys to vote in support of that. One more thing, I think a lot of things have been said over here, but you have to look at CAA and NRC together, not in isolation, because CAA is a filter that just takes into account everyone except the Muslims. So, and another thing I want to point out is, guys, there is already a working model in Assam where NRC and CAA is done. And a lot of people have talked about, like, 2 million people are already being filtered out. Out of that, all the non-Muslims will be given citizenship through CAA. And the other Muslims will be put in detention camp, which is supposed to be like 3,000 some kind of thing, but you know, it's just one step closer to becoming into a concentration camp. So I really urge you guys to...
Please wrap up.
...vote in support of Ms. Savant. So thank you, Ms. Savant, for this.
Cassandra Armstrong will be followed by Pavan Krimila.
Krimila, let me pull it up, I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam President. I want to start my public comment by reminding everyone that we are on stolen, unceded, dwammish land, and I call on the city council to include a land acknowledgement at the start of its meetings. I'm speaking today in favor of both of my councilmember Shama Savant's resolutions, opposing, first, the war mongering, the president's war mongering efforts in Iran. It's important that our progressive city council speaks out against this imperialist effort and to fight the use of military force in Iran. In fact, it should be and is our only option as a progressive city to speak out against these actions by the federal government and to support the congressional effort to prevent the president from using the power of the world's most extensive military unnecessarily. I wish to further stand in solidarity with my siblings in opposition to the Citizenship Amendment Act. A progressive body like Seattle City Council should never support genocide, religious persecution, or Narendra Modi's fascist government, and I urge your support of both of Councilmember Savant's resolutions.
Pavan Krimila will be followed by Rizwan Sama.
Hi. These are the names of the people who got killed in UP because of the suppression from the UP government for the anti-CAA protesters. Mohammed Asif, Ali Vansari, Jahi Rahmat, Asif, Mausin, Mohammed Anas, Mohammed Shafiq, Arman, Mukhim, Mohammed Haroon, Nubi Jan, Rashid, Mohammed Abar, Mohammed Sagir, Mohammed Saif, Raiz Khan, Afthab Alam, Faiz Khan, Mohammed Noor, Mohammed Shahroz, Bilal Pasha, Mohammed Wakil. All of them are my brothers. They are humans. They are Indians. I don't want to qualify them by their religion. I don't want to qualify myself by my religion. I'm here for them because we are defending the Constitution of India. And just to let you know, one of them was Mohammed Sagir, who is an eight-year-old boy killed in the stampede. All the rest of them, except one, but all the rest of them were killed by bullet wounds of the police of Uttar Pradesh. You have to realize this. If you delay, if you delay this resolution...
Please wrap up.
...another eight-year-old kid might die. Please support the resolution.
Rizwan Sama is followed by Shiha Budin.
So I'm speaking as a group in place of Rizwan Masri, so we can cross both of those names off, as well as other individuals.
Rizwan and who else?
Masri Fuladi.
All right, I'll keep looking. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Masri Fuladi. I serve my community as the Executive Director of the Council on American Islamic Relations. I've had the pleasure of working with many of you on issues addressing hate crimes, addressing issues of surveillance and police accountability, and organizing for a complete count in the city of Seattle on the census. I am here to address the local impacts of both resolutions, 31925 and 31926, and thank Councilmember Savant for her leadership on both of these issues. Since the strikes by the president in Iraq, as well as the occupation of Kashmir, the Muslim community here has been on high alarm. We have been on high alarm because we've noticed an increase in hate crimes impacting all of us here within the city of Seattle. So I want to highlight the local impact that these resolutions bring. They give confidence to your Muslim community members and constituents that you care about their safety. Even some of the comments that we've heard today are blatant Islamophobia that try to create division amongst regions in the Middle East, but the impacts here are real. We've had spikes in hate crimes reported to the Seattle Police Department, as well as we've been working with the mayor's office and some of the councilmembers on addressing hate crimes as a whole. If you vote no on either of these resolutions or delay a vote on these resolutions, the community will hear you loud and clearly. You're essentially saying that Islamophobia is okay, that hate crimes are not a priority issue for you all, and I know that to not be the case. I know that you're very concerned about hate crimes, and I understand that these are issues that you think, oh, there might be foreign, what is going to be the daily impact on our lives? And that's why, again, as an organization that takes down numbers on hate crimes, I can tell you that when it comes to issues of division, whether it's Hindu nationalism or white supremacy, those are prime concerns to our councilmembers. So I urge you all to vote yes on both resolutions today. Thank you.
So it's now 3 o'clock. I'd really hope that we'd been able to get further through this list by now. By my count, if we had followed my request to cease clapping in between speakers, we would have just been one person off of completing the list. So I defer to my colleagues on the council. We have another 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, about 17 more speakers. And I'm open to allowing for additional time, but I would like, we have spent an hour of our agenda today on this issue, and I would like, in return for my showing and the rest of councilmembers, should they agree to extend the time longer, my respect for you to be returned in allowing us to move quickly through the speakers and not clapping in between. Can we agree on that? Thank you. So with that, I'm going to make a motion that we continue to hear from folks and give us another 20 minutes, will bring us to 3:20. All in favor? Vote aye? Aye? None opposed, no standing? Okay, so we're extending the timeframe for another 20 minutes. With that, we're going to move right into Shahubidin, followed by, sorry, Debaiduda Dash.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Famous personalities from India and Nobel Prize winners Amr Daasan, Kailash Satyarti, Abhijit Banerji, already spoke against the discriminatory law and requested India government to step back from it. I'm assured the progressive Seattle City Council members will value the voice raised by these eminent global citizens. I'm certain that Seattle City Council name will be recorded in history for becoming the first city council in the U.S., proactively act against this fascist stand taken by right-wing Indian government. Mr. Luther King Jr. said, "The ultimate tragedy is not the oppression and cruelty by the bad people, but the silence over that by the good people." He also said that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Yes, injustice in India is a threat to justice here. Martin Luther King Jr. inspired the human race to strive for harmony among all people. His tragic death shocked the nation, but his words and his dedication to equally continue to inspire generation around the globe. Hope Mr. King's message...
Please wrap up.
...lift our heart and spirit. Thank you.
Debaiduda Dash will be followed by Pankaj Thakur.
Honorable councilmembers, I strongly oppose this resolution brought in by Councilmembers Shama Savant. I would like to say a few words. I cannot speak in details about the CAA and NCP to you. I can write an email to you all individually, because you need to study this in detail before coming to a conclusion or before making any public statement. First of all, I am the co-chair of the Washington State and India Trade Relation Action Committee. Since 2009, we have been taking trade delegations to India. 2010, first one-city, Seattle Congressman Jim McDermott. 2011, we signed the first sister port agreement between Port of Seattle and the only port of sister port agreement with India. 2012, when Seattle Center celebrated 50th anniversary, India was the highlight. First of all, there should be no fear. There are so many misinformation, there are so many distrusts among the information here that are unbelievable. No genocide, no Indian Muslims are going to lose citizenship act. Please reject this. We are wasting our time...
Thank you.
...for the Seattle City Council.
Please wrap up.
Please reject this resolution. Thank you.
Pankaj Thakur will be followed by Suhal Mahmood.
Hi, I'm Pankaj Thakur. Thank you for the opportunity. So as a U.S. citizen, I favor life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness for all, especially those unfortunate enough to be living under theocratic regimes. The CAA helps all persecuted minorities in Islamic theocracies of Afghanistan, Bangladesh, and Pakistan. It is a law passed by both houses of parliament in the democratic country of India. Just two days back, you know, it's very important that we put it in context, we commemorated the 30th anniversary of huge genocide of the non-Muslims by the Muslims in Kashmir, India, right? Civilized peoples of the world have stood by for far too long by Islamic armies with a state, like India is a state with an army, Pakistan is an army with a state. Similarly, Afghanistan was Taliban, an army with a state.
Thank you. Please wrap up.
So those go about torturing and exterminating non-Muslims. And the last point, given that the world works as a system of sovereign nation-states, it does not behoove a city council to interfere with the duties and rights of elected representatives anywhere, especially...
Thank you. Your time is up.
...the largest democracy in the world.
Suhal Mahmood will be followed by Milan Kukarni.
Hello. I'm speaking in support of the resolution and I oppose CAA and NRC. So all those folks who are saying, why are we here in this Seattle council and talking about things that are not happening in Seattle? Yes, they're not. They are happening very far away from here, thousands of miles, and to all those arguments, I will let Dr. King's words speak and not me. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So I condemn all the inhumanity that occurs in Saudi Arabia, in Pakistan, or in any other country where followers of Islam are in majority. I condemn that. But the wrongs done in another country do not justify what is happening in India. India should not take Saudi Arabia as its role model. That is not right. It is like we are moving in the wrong direction. We have to become more modernized and not go in the anti-modernist...
Please wrap up. Your time is up.
...direction. I propose that we should support this resolution, and thank you.
Following Milan Kukarni, we have, I believe it's Sean Butterfield.
Thank you. Is this mic or this mic?
Yeah, either works. And you can move it, too.
My name is Milan Kukarni, and I live in Seattle proper. I'm not from out of town. I vote here, I pay my taxes here. I urge the city council to vote against Councilmember Shama Savant's resolution for three reasons. Number one, the resolution makes a number of factually incorrect statements and absurd arguments. My mother, my sister, my relatives, and friends live in India in Pune, where she's from. They and country overwhelmingly supported the law. India's Citizenship Amendment Act is no different than what was introduced here in the U.S. in 1990 and 2015, when it provides fast-tax citizenship to Jews and Christians in certain countries. India is trying to do the same thing, where Hindus, Christians, Buddhists, Muslims, sorry, Giants, Sikhs from three countries are persecuted. Second, Mrs. Savant's resolution is an attempt to malign India's tolerant, peaceful, and inclusive democracy and to divide Indians. A large number of tax-paying, law-abiding citizens of Indian origin live here in Seattle and contribute positively.
Please wrap up.
This resolution would make Seattle unwelcome place for people of Indian origin. I request you to reject this resolution. Thank you.
Sean Butterfield will be followed by Deerinda Talur.
I'm here with comrades from SA, speak as a group. Good afternoon, I'm Sean, a renter in District 3. This is Athena and John. We are members of Socialist Alternative, the political organization of Councilmember Shama Savant. Socialist Alternative nationally and our international sister organizations strongly support both the resolutions brought forward for a vote today by Councilmember Savant, and we agree that both resolutions should be voted on today without delay. We stand against Trump's escalations toward Iran. Socialist Alternative is in solidarity with the hundreds of South Asian people and community supporters in the Seattle area protesting against the racist National Register of Citizens and the Citizenship Amendment Act by the right-wing fundamentalist Indian government of Modi and the BJP. We stand with the courageous protests in India facing down stunning repression and violence by the police, and with the 250 million workers and union members who went out on a one-day strike, general strike in India against these right-wing laws and against the worsening economic situation faced by the majority. The only way to defeat the right is to connect it to the fight against the oppressive conditions faced by all working people under capitalism. Our fight against Trump needs to be linked with Medicare for All and a Green New Deal, which is why I'm campaigning for Bernie Sanders for president. In Seattle, we're fighting to tax Amazon and big business to fund a major expansion of social housing. Please join our action conference Saturday, January 25 at 10:00 a.m. at Washington Hall in the Central District. I urge you to vote and approve both on, do not delay this vote and approve both of these resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Deerinda Talur will be followed by Dan Gilman.
Hello. Hello. I oppose this Savant's resolution. The CAA realizes a promise made by India's founding fathers, including Mahatma Gandhi, at the time of India's partition in 1947 to religious minorities of Pakistan and today's Bangladesh, that India will always be a home for them. In the past, leaders from across India's political spectrum have demanded that India enact this law. This compassionate law does not change India's pluralistic democracy in any way. The CAA provides citizenship to persecuted religious minorities from three of India's neighboring countries who fled to India to safeguard their lives and are already resident in India for at least five years. Since partition in 1947, the percentage of religious minorities in Pakistan has dropped from 16% to 1.7%, and percentage of minorities in Bangladesh has dropped from 22% to 9.5% now. Just like America was a source of refuge to Jews persecuted in Europe, India is offering a life of dignity to persecuted minorities from three of India's neighboring countries with the Muslim majority.
Thank you. Dan Gilman will be followed by Kim Loftness.
Good afternoon. My name is Dan Gilman. I'm with Veterans for Peace and the Seattle Anti-War Coalition. I'm afraid that this resolution regarding Iran is getting... I'm afraid that this resolution regarding Iran is getting lost in the shuffle here with the overwhelming response regarding India. But I hope the council will take this resolution as seriously as that one and vote on that today. Last Monday, at the council meeting, I spoke to you regarding Resolution 31925 against the war in Iran and condemning the Border Patrol agents targeting, detaining people of Iranian descent. I'm here again today to again urge your support for that resolution and to oppose the substitute resolution. That resolution version, I believe, is much stronger statement against the war with Iran. And that needs to go to our council. And it needs to be passed today because the Senate, the U.S. Senate, is going to likely vote on that this week.
Kim Loftness will be followed by, I believe it's Peniel Scheeter.
Kim is left.
Kim is left, okay. Do we have a Pamille Cheater? Is that correct? All right, please join us. Followed by Ava Sharifi.
Parul Chetra goes right now?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. Not knowing what I was expecting here, I am, let me say, vegan. I believe in all lives matters. And I'm here to actually reject Shama Sawant's resolution around CAA and NRC, not for any Hindu, Muslim, anything. I believe in human rights for all. And if this law is going to give human rights to few, maybe there are others will care, there are other vehicles, why not do it? And I would love to have, you know, maybe dialogues or even thoughts in everybody's mind by rejecting CAA right now. Are we not depriving those who really need help? So as I said, I'm not here for Hindu, Muslims, anybody. I'm a global citizen, proud citizen of United States for last, you know, 20 years, have been living in this country for 30 years. I'm a woman in tech, vegan, all lives matters. Please reject this resolution because those folks need help. It's human rights.
Following Ava Sharifi, we've got Mark Taylor-Canfield.
Thank you. My name is Ava Sharifi and I'm a first-generation Iranian-American woman who not only opposes a war with Iran, but war mongering in general. I am hopeful that you will hear many resounding comments today echoing a desire to keep the Iranian population in Seattle safe and secure by ensuring their native land is not destroyed by the hands of U.S. militarism, and furthermore, that Iranians will not endure the silent violence that is checkpoints, Border Patrol, and agents of deportation, striking fear into the hearts of immigrants that have called Washington their home for decades, if not their entire life. However, let me be clear by one point. Any aggression towards Iran is a continuation of the illegal nation building that occurred in Iraq and Afghanistan. And that is why we call it endless war, because no longer is a distinctive starts and ends. And so that is why I'm opposed to any amendment that waters down the context that surrounds Councilwoman Sawant's resolution. We want to protect our Iranian community. Let's do it with more than just rhetoric. Let's do it with an actual sentiment to anti-war. Thank you.
Following Mark Taylor-Canfield, we have Stan Shihuma.
My name is Mark Taylor-Canfield. I'm a journalist and a musician in Seattle. I'm executive director of Democracy Watch News, a nonprofit news organization. I've written at Truthout and Daily Coast and other places. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution against the war because yesterday was MLK Day and I know what Dr. King thought about foreign interventions using the military. So here's my song. Mister boss man, we don't need any more wars. Mister boss man, we don't need any more wars. Yeah, we've had too many. Don't want to go down the road no more. Mister boss man, won't you hear us when we call? Mister boss man, won't you hear us when we call?
Thank you, Mark. Your time is up.
Yeah, we don't want no wars.
Cut the mic. We don't want to do it. We're going to have to cut the mic.
We want peace, that's all.
Clark, please cut the mic. Stan Shihuma will be followed by Said Faisal.
Thank you, counsel. I'm Stan Shihuma. I'm the president of the Seattle chapter of the Japanese-American Citizens League. I'm here to support Resolution 31925, calling for preventing war with Iran and stop discrimination against Iranian-Americans. Seventy-eight years ago, right after Pearl Harbor, my community, the Japanese-American community, was targeted by our own government because of suspicions of possible sabotage, espionage, whatever. All of that was groundless. No one was ever convicted or even tried for such crimes. And we are aghast to see the similar thing happening to Iranian-Americans now. The episode at the border at Blaine is untenable in a democracy, and we urge you to take a strong stand against that. Thank you.
Following Said Faisal, we've got Pavan Hukin.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Said Faisal. I'm a PhD candidate at the University of Washington. I'm also a standing member of the Muslim Students Association here at the university, and we are in full support for this resolution and provide our highest recommendation for this. You see, India as a nation was founded on democratic values of secularism, but now a new government wants to destabilize one of the world's largest democracies. What happens is government-issued IDs such as a voter ID, a passport, are no longer sufficient to prove that you're a citizen of the country. While the government does say that they're bringing in refugees, what's also happening is a mass exodus of Muslims that are going to be put into detention centers, just like the Jewish people and the horrors that they were afflicted with Nazi Germany. We're in Seattle and we're proud to be of Seattle. That stands for equality of all irrespective of religion, race, or gender. And we're proud to have all of you on our council. So I urge you to adopt this resolution, to support it, so that you can make a difference to Muslim and Indian lives across the world. Thank you.
Following Pavan Hukin, we've got Sadh- let's see, Sahadet Khan.
My name is Pavan Kumar Okiri. I'm from India. I basically was born Hindu. My dad converted to Buddhism because of the unbiased discrimination happening in the lower strata of the people. So I support both the resolutions. So I support both the resolutions. I'm—just the people who say the CAA is not affecting the Hindus or anybody who is living in India is a very dangerous statement. This is a first law which has been passed based on the religion, and it allows presidents to be—many more laws to be passed in future which are much more dangerous and which affects the basic fundamental supper constitution, which is basic equality, fraternity, and liberty to all. So I strongly condemn the passing of the law in our parliament and my entire family back in India. He's against this. I ask the city council to pass the resolution today in support of that. Thank you.
Sahadet Khan will be followed by Salhala Worsy.
So we have heard a lot of arguments, both for and against the resolution to reject the India's CAA law. I want to play a bit of a devil's advocate here. Let me start to count. A famous American has said that you can fool some people for many times, you can fool many people for some times, but you can't fool all people for all the times. So when some of the folks here said that, you know, Ms. Shama Sawant is misinformed and ignorant, I want to protest against that. Millions of people across the globe are marching and condemning this Citizen Amendment Act that has been passed by India. And this is—the millions are speaking, the intellectuals have spoken against that law, the celebrities have spoken. So yes, please hear me out, guys. Ms. Shama Sawant is not misinformed, she is not ignorant, she is rather courageous, guys. Okay? Let me talk off a bit of double standards here. Some of the folks have said that, you know, it is not right for the city council, the Seattle folks.
Thank you. Your time is up. We have Salhala Worsy and our last speaker is Adnan Siddique.
My name is Salia Worsy. Two points. I support Councilman Sawant's resolutions, and I don't want either of them to be watered down. We need to be forceful in this. I'm an Indian Muslim, married to an American naval officer, retired. We Indians, our country was born out of 200 years of colonial repression. We are a republic. We are secular. I don't want my country to become the next apartheid state of India. We are a republic of India. Secondly, the war—this ongoing attempt to create a war with Iran is repugnant to my husband, who was stationed in Iran both during and after the fall of the Shah. The Iranian people have a right to live in peace and dignity. The only reason General Soleimani was killed was because America is acting as a proxy for the state of Israel. Netanyahu right now is in problems, and so is Donald Trump with impeachment. We should not have a war with Iran.
Adnan Siddique is our last speaker.
I'm Adnan from this beautiful city of Seattle, and I support both resolutions because this speaks against atrocities and it actually supports justice. So the people who are opposing this, they're actually trying to take advantage of people who don't have the correct education or the knowledge. So democracy without education is hypocrisy without limitation. We all know that. Tomorrow, if you become minorities and if anyone from my community, Muslims, hurt you, I will be the first one to support you. Speak against injustice. Thank you very much.
Thank you. No end public comment? Move on to the agenda? Payment to bills? I'm sorry? Payment to bills? Oh, sorry, you're right. It's—I was looking—I was looking at you and I got to get on my break page here. I got it. Payment to bills? Please read the title.
Council Bill 119735, approving money to pay Sardan claims for the week of January 6, 2020 through January 10, 2020, and ordering the payment thereof.
Thank you. I move to pass Council Bill 119735. It has been moved and seconded that the bill pass. Are there any comments? Seeing no comments, please call the roll on the passage of the bill.
Lewis?
Aye.
Morales?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Sawant?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Juarez?
Aye.
Council President Herbold?
Aye.
Seven in favor and none opposed.
The bill passes and the chair will sign it. See, let's see. Report of the—not—I guess—not committees. We have a report from previous items on the agenda.
The report of the city council, Agenda 1, Resolution 31925, expressing the Seattle City Council's opposition to the Trump administration's escalation toward war with Iran and to attacks on the democratic rights of people with Iranian heritage in Washington State, and requesting the Office of Intergovernmental Relations communicate these positions to the Washington State Congressional delegation.
Thank you. Would Councilmember Sawant like to address the resolution?
Yes. Should I move to substitute, speak to the substitution, then we take a vote, and then I speak to the base?
Yes, that sounds great. Would you like me to move or would you like to move?
I'm happy to move. And then if you second, and then I just want to say something. I move to substitute version three of Resolution 31925 for version one.
I second.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to it or?
Sure. I appreciate the opportunity to work with Councilmember Sawant over the last week, as well as the Office of Intergovernmental Relations and additional stakeholder groups beyond ones who had been consulted as of last week. And I feel that in—although there's been some concern about the resolution becoming weakened after our week's worth of deliberations, I think in many ways, it's actually been strengthened because we have really, I think, honed in on why it is appropriate for the Seattle City Council to weigh in on this and the impact of these international actions on residents of our city, the impact of actions that are happening at the border on residents of our city. And so rather than just simply being a resolution against certain international actions, we are really focusing on our values as a city, being an inclusive, welcoming city, and pointing to, I think, a lot of the strengths of this community while, I hope, preserving the intent of the language in the resolution to also be a strong anti-war statement.
Thank you, Council President Protem Herbold. I—it was my original intention to have this resolution opposing Trump's escalation toward war in Iran last week, but we needed to hold it. And as Councilmember Herbold said, having talked to the Office of Intergovernmental Relations, Councilmember Herbold's office proposed a series of amendments just before the vote last Monday. And I do agree that this resolution is a strong enough resolution, and I really appreciate my colleague for working with me and my office to find the language for the substitute that we can both accept. But I do want to state for the record that the original substitution that was offered greatly weakened the anti-war language and the whole motivation behind the disastrous history of U.S. imperialism and why this war should be opposed. As Ava Sharifi said, the reason we're opposing the war in Iran is because we know what has happened through previous wars, and it's important to record that in the resolution. This is also what Dan Gilman from Veterans for Peace was referring to. However, thanks to all of your organizing, thanks to hundreds of people, ordinary people, writing to city council and calling and urging that the resolution not lose its anti-war character, we have arrived at a version that I think does present a strong case from the city council why we are opposing the resolution. And so I will support this substitution and then I'll speak to the resolution.
Fantastic. Thank you. So it's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution. Are there additional comments on the amended version of the resolution? Councilmember Morales?
Just in general on the resolution, is that—oh, no, on the amended?
Traditionally, we speak to the resolution itself after we get the amended version in front of us. If you have comments on the amended version? Okay. All right. With that, those in favor of the proposed substitute, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no. And the motion carries and the resolution is amended. We now have the amended version in front of us. Are there any further comments on the resolution as amended? Councilwoman Morales? Sorry, I'm new to this?
As a sponsor, I'm going to defer to—
Of course.
—Councilmember Sawant first.
Thank you. This is the resolution in opposition to both Trump's escalation toward war with Iran and also in opposition to reports of Border Patrol agents targeting people of Iranian descent at the border crossing in Blaine, Washington, and at Seattle Tacoma International Airport. Trump's policies towards Iran, including airstrikes and the prominent drone assassination of Iranian Major General Qasem Soleimani in Iraq, are risking war, and that is totally unacceptable. The U.S. wars in Afghanistan and in Iraq have not expanded the freedom, democracy, standards of living, or safety of ordinary people in the Middle East, and have not increased the safety of people in the U.S. Instead, they have caused massive loss of human life and ongoing suffering in Afghanistan and Iraq and among U.S. soldiers. It is ordinary people, especially women, young people, and marginalized communities, who always pay the greatest price for imperialist war. As a socialist-elected representative, I will do everything in my power to prevent another disastrous war in the Middle East, and I look forward to the whole city council taking that position. In 2019, working people in Iran, Iraq, and Lebanon built inspiring mass movements against poverty, corruption, ethnic oppression, and authoritarian rule. However, now, the threat of war with the U.S. has undermined the momentum of these movements, especially in Iran, and strengthened the authoritarian Iranian regime. Instead of threats of war, we need a mass anti-war movement in the U.S. and globally in solidarity with the movements in the Middle East. In drafting this resolution, my office looked to see if there was a precedent set by the city council in 2003, when Bush drove the U.S. to war with Iraq using similarly sketchy intelligence reports claiming imminent threat with no details. We were shocked—I was not on the council in 2003. We were shocked to find a 2003 resolution that totally failed to oppose the war in any way, which I think really illustrates how our movement has now, in the current time, moved politics in this city and nationwide. Just to read a first few lines of the resolution passed on March 18, 2003, by the Seattle City Council, two days before the start of the Iraq War, it says, quote, "A resolution in support of the men and women of the—" in support of the men and women of the Armed Forces of the United States, expressing our pride in their service, whereas the President of the United States has activated and deployed numerous men and women of the Armed Forces from Washington State and from Seattle to the war in Iraq and to assignments in Afghanistan that are related to the ongoing war on terrorism, and whereas their service in our Armed Forces is one of highest traditions of American patriotism." These are the words of a progressive City Council about a war started by George Bush. And so, let's be crystal clear. It is dishonest for a ruling elite that engages in endless imperialist war in order to apportion the spoils of global capitalism amongst themselves while they exploit the majority, to then turn around and talk about well-being and pride of the soldiers who are sent to fight their wars. The best way to keep your soldiers safe and protect their well-being is don't start endless war. Another casualty of war is the democratic rights of people at home. Border Patrol agents in Washington State are now targeting people of Iranian descent, including U.S. citizens. People have been detained and questioned for hours, including families with young children, as they return home to Seattle through the border in Canada, near Canada or the Sea-Tac Airport. We have heard personally from people who have had these experiences. My office spoke to a representative from the Port of Seattle, which is the government entity that operates Sea-Tac Airport. First, we were told by them that there was no increased targeting of people of Iranian descent at Sea-Tac so far, which is clearly not true because we are hearing incidents that are happening. But then, they claimed that this was what Homeland Security is claiming. He then told us that Homeland Security is expecting to start increasing its targeting of Iranian Americans at the airport. This is extremely concerning to us. But what the public should know is that this person, this representative of the port, then told my staff, requested my staff member, that we avoid the sort of peaceful civil disobedience protest that we helped organize at the airport in 2017, which was a protest that joined similar actions at airports around the country and which helped temporarily halt Trump's Muslim travel ban. My office has, of course, told them that we are not going to stop any civil disobedience protests at the airport. And in fact, if peaceful civil disobedience is required to protect our Iranian sisters and brothers, then that is exactly what we will do. And so, it's been my pleasure to work with many of the groups, including Veterans for Peace, the Council on American Islamic Relations. And I should also mention, all the activists who are fighting for the India resolution are also strongly supporting this resolution, and I've been part of that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Morales?
Thank you. Well, I want to thank everybody first for being here and taking time from your work day, if you needed to do that to be here. I know that's not easy. And I do want to say that I stand in solidarity with the people of Iranian heritage who have been unfairly targeted by our Border Patrol and law enforcement following the assassination of General Soleimani. Our neighbors should not be questioned or detained based on their ethnic, religious, or cultural identities. Doing so follows the dangerous tradition of condoning race-based discrimination, which we all know becomes enshrined in government policies that exclude people from their ability to pursue prosperity. We have governed based on fear before in this country, and it has led to shameful practices like intering our Japanese-American neighbors, who somebody spoke about earlier, and by questioning the loyalty of longtime residents who deserve their shot at safety and prosperity and opportunity. We know that Seattle must oppose any discrimination against immigrants and refugees and reject the escalation of war with Iran, which puts the lives of millions of Iranians, Iranian-Americans, and Muslims at large in greater danger. And I am supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes. Thank you to everyone for being here today, taking time from your busy days to tell us your thoughts on these resolutions. I share the passion and views of my colleagues about these important matters, and I thank you for raising them. I appreciate that colleagues have spent many hours over the past week revising the original resolution. Every day, I'm deeply troubled by the rhetoric and actions of the Trump administration. I will vote yes. And so, I will vote in favor of this resolution because, of course, it's wrong for President Trump to start a war against Iran. And of course, it's wrong for our federal officials to discriminate at the border, at our airport, or anywhere. I will vote yes. And also, please allow me to ask that we try to not craft a City Council resolution for every horrible thing that our president or any world leader does. I believe we can do the most good and deliver the best response as elected City Council members by proving how well a government can be run. And by government, I mean the city government of Seattle. I believe we could research, write, review, debate, and vote on a new resolution every hour of every day to counter every bad thing that President Trump or his administration does. But every minute, as a legislative body, we spend researching, writing, reviewing, debating, and voting on these resolutions is a minute we could be spending to reduce homelessness, to improve emergency medical response, to make sure we get through dangerous snowstorms, to oversee a city budget of $6.5 billion, spanning over 40 city departments, impacting over 700,000 people right here in Seattle. So, but I do support this resolution. We must speak out against these injustices. I believe we can send letters of our support to congressional colleagues, to our Port of Seattle colleagues. But to take up time before and during City Council meetings for all of these resolutions is a slippery slope where we could take our eye off the ball of running this city government. So, again, I'm voting yes, and I'm confident that our Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal and our U.S. Senators Murray and Cantwell and our esteemed Port Commissioners are more than capable of dealing with this situation with or without a City Council resolution, which I will support today. Thank you.
And as the proposer of the resolution, if there's no further folks who want to talk, I'm going to allow Councilmember Sawat to close out debate.
Thank you. In closing out, I wanted to respond to the comments made by Councilmember Peterson just now. He used terms like that if we pass, if the Council acts on resolutions such as the Iran resolution or the India resolution, that is somehow, it's going to be a slippery slope and direct the City Council away from the city's tasks. In my view, saying that the City Council is in danger of passing a resolution on every injustice going on in the planet is a straw man argument. That is not what the City Council does. The purpose of these -- The purpose of such resolutions as the two that have been brought forward from my office is not for me as an elected representative or someone else to take a pro forma or, you know, just in name-only position against oppression and check off that box. The purpose is to use such resolutions as a tool to empower and build social movements, which is ultimately what makes the difference. We are -- I, as a City Council member, am under no illusion that simply by passing a resolution here, things are going to change. What the resolution does do is it empowers the movement to keep building. And we know that a yes vote on the India resolution from the City Council will not only empower the global movement against Modi's regime, but beyond that, actually, it is going to be nothing short of historic because it will be the first such position taken by a legislative body in the United States. And last -- And as far as the local questions are concerned, and if there are any concerns by Councilmember Peterson that somehow we are not paying attention, let me tell you, I've been on the council for six years. The reason the City Council continues to oversee an unprecedented crisis of homelessness and housing unaffordability is not because we are passing too many irrelevant resolutions, but it's because of the lack of moral and political courage to do what is needed urgently, which is to tax big business and fund a major expansion ---- a publicly-owned, high-quality social housing as part of a Green New Deal program. The climate change and housing crisis are the two crises facing the city urgently, and that is what we need to do. But passing resolutions is not in the barrier. The barrier is a lack of courage, and that is why I hope everybody will join us at the Tax Amazon Action Conference this Saturday at 10:00 a.m.
Those in favor of adopting the resolution as amended, vote aye.
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 Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries. The resolution is adopted as amended, and the chair will sign it.
Agenda item 2, Resolution 31926, reaffirming Seattle as a welcoming city expressing the Seattle City Council's solidarity with Seattle's South Asian community regardless of religion and caste, and opposing India's National Register of Citizens and Citizenship Amendment Act.
I move to hold Resolution 31926 until February 3, 2020.
Second.
I appreciate that a lot of folks took time out of their day to come and speak to us today in anticipation of a vote on this resolution. The legislative process always has as a potential the request for a hold. I'm asking that my colleagues support me in my request for a hold. We have heard from the Washington State Trade Relations Action Committee, as well as we have heard from a number of individuals representing themselves. And we have heard also from the Indian consulate in San Francisco that this resolution would benefit from a little bit more time and care. I'm very sensitive to how these resolutions are appropriately and powerfully used. And they are used in a way that encourages other legislative bodies to adopt them. And for that reason, I want to really make sure that we have taken the extra time and care to make sure that everything in this resolution, before bringing it forward to vote, is characterized in a way that we can stand by and say that we have done our due diligence and that we are certain that the information contained in the resolution is accurate. We're working with our Office of Intergovernmental Relations because, as Councilmember Peterson mentions, our staff, because of the heavy workload that we have working on city business, doesn't have the time to fact-check resolutions like this. So, we have an Office of Intergovernmental Relations that has reached out to an individual who is with the Seattle International Affairs Advisory Board at the Jackson School of University of Washington, who's working to connect OIR with subject matter experts in the South Asian Center for Additional Feedback. And so, I'm confident. I was willing to hold this for one additional week. Councilmember Sawat asked that it be held instead until February 3, when she will be able to be in attendance because she will not be here next week. And with that, I would request the support of my colleagues on the council for the hold until February 3. It has been moved and seconded that the resolution be held until February 3. Are there any comments? Councilmember Sawat?
Just in terms of process, I have comments on the hold itself, but I also have comment on the base legislation, which I think I have the right to speak to it as well because it's on the agenda. So, do you want me to say it all at once, or?
I think all at once would be great.
Okay. So, first, I want to speak to the hold. And, you know, again, I'm speaking to members of the public and the movement who are here and also who are watching. I know many, many, including people in other countries, are watching the proceedings of this City Council today. I want to be clear, whether the resolution is passed today or at a future date in a couple of weeks, we are going to make sure that council members are going to vote yes on this resolution because it will be up to them to explain why they would not support a fight, a global fight against egregious injustices. And I'm confident that that's going to happen. But I do not support delaying this vote. I think, as many of you yourselves who have taken time off from work, I know some of you have actually taken the day off. Some of you got your children early from school because you wanted them to be here as well. I think it's disrespectful to all of you and people who are watching this. And also, it sort of quells the, you know, it has a dampening effect on the movement. But I want to urge you to not be discouraged by this because, as I said, we're going to make this happen. And but I do want to state for the record that it is unfortunate and disrespectful to the ordinary people who have come here. You know, we, as council members, do a lot of work, yes. I should know that because my office fights on a lot of issues on the ground. However, people here are also hardworking. They have their day jobs. They are looking after their families, and they made time to come here. So, I want to say that it's really unfortunate. I also wanted to point out that the council has had access to my draft resolution for a week now, but I hadn't heard any questions about it or any comments for all of that time until just two hours before this meeting today. And I am -- can I -- let me speak. Let me -- no, no, no. Nobody's lying. I just want to clarify.
Head sunfire?
We -- I completely agree. I mean, as an economist myself, I completely agree with fact-checking. But I don't believe that the origination of the delay is from a fact-checking concern. The origination of the delay is because the Consul General of India sent an email to the establishment, and they are worried by that. So, it's fine. It's fine. We will -- I'm going to vote. Let me speak. I'm going to vote no on the delay. But I also, I'm completely willing and able, I mean, I'm looking forward to working with the whole council to make sure everything is fact-checked. However, I do want to point out that some of the entities, I think, Councilmember Herbold, you mentioned, I don't see them as neutral agencies on fact-checking. So, our movement will also be doing its own fact-checking and from whatever amendments are proposed. And we are going to make sure that the essential character of the resolution is not taken away. And we also, I also just wanted to share that, just as a point of information, that I've been in touch with myself, with professors at the Jackson School of International Studies, who are also experts on this. And so, I look forward to a frank discussion on this. But I want to be clear that we're not accepting the Consul General's position because the Consul General is nothing but a Modi representative. It's an extension of the administration. So, and I want to talk about the base resolution in a second, but just want to point out -- I just want to point out, I have gone through the Consul General's letter. I am not misguided. I am not misinformed. It's, you know, as people would like to believe, some people would like to believe. I'll tell you, the most striking thing, and I urge you all to read that letter as well, we can share it with you, the most striking thing about that letter, and this is what makes that letter completely dishonest and basically useless, is it avoids any mention of the National Register of Citizens. That is where the problem starts and ends because that's where the crux of the problem lies. And that's what I want to get to because that's the explanation of why the combination of CAA and NRC is so bad and why it's a blatant threat to the citizenship rights of India's 200 million Muslims, hundreds of millions of poor people, indigenous communities, oppressed castes, women, and LGBTQ people. I wanted to repeat some points I made for the benefit of my colleagues in the morning, but since you all are here, it's important to share this. The National Register of Citizens came long before the Citizenship Amendment Act even existed. There was no Citizenship Amendment Act first. There was a National Register of Citizens. This requires that every person in India produce proof of citizenship, but not a passport, not your Aadhaar card, nothing like that. But a new set of criteria have been devised by the NRC. The NRC was tried out in one state, in Assam, which others have mentioned. What are the documents required under the Assam National Register of Citizens? I wanted to read that. If you have a pre-1971 self-identity, you know, like a birth certificate, you're fine. If you don't have that, then you have to present both a pre-1971 parents' identity proof and a relationship proof with your parents or grandparents. Think about this. I was born after 1971. I have none of those documents. So, technically, I would not get -- I would be rejected as a citizen personally in India. But I won't be affected. Why? Because when they saw the NRC's disastrous effects where Indians were, I mean, Hindus were falling into the non-citizen category, they immediately had to act and, you know, make something happen so that Hindus were not unintentionally getting caught because their intention was to put Muslims in the non-citizen category. And so, then they quickly came up with the Citizenship Amendment Act, which basically says that if you have a Hindu name, you don't have to provide documentation. says that if you have a Hindu name, you don't have to provide documentation. So in other words, because I come from a Hindu family, even though I don't have any of the documentation, I am all set. I will get citizenship. But those of you who are Muslim will not get the citizenship. And not only that, if you can't provide the documentation as a Muslim or as a person of other religion, whatever, then you are facing the prospect of detention centers or prisons. And again, this is not speculative. This is actually happening. In Assam, we have seen 2 million people become stateless, being declared stateless, and many of them are languishing in detention centers. Some, you know, people said, you know, little children are dying. So protests have been happening throughout the nation. They started on university campuses, but now they are all over the country. And as P. Sainath said, in recent, in my lifetime, I have not seen the whole of India wake up in the way that it has, and we've seen massive actions. I wanted to quickly read out the message of solidarity that Arundhati Roy, writer and activist, has sent to me personally on this resolution. I wanted to quote that quickly because it's very brief. It says, quote, "The Indian Government Citizenship Amendment Act, coupled with a national citizenship register, resembled the Nuremberg Citizenship Laws of the Third Reich. They could generate panic, uncontrollable chaos, and a population of stateless people on an unimaginable scale. In the state of Assam alone, pending a last round of appeals, the number is close to 2 million. The government must be prevailed upon to repeal these laws as quickly as possible. I support Seattle City Councilmember Kshama Sawant's resolution. I hope others around the world will follow its example." And I'm happy to say also that the City of Seattle LGBTQ Commission voted unanimously last week to support this resolution. We will make sure other commissions also follow. We also have API CHIA and the Indian American Islamic Council, and we also had the Council on American Islamic Relations give us solidarity. And then there are hundreds of South Asians who are not necessarily under any group, but they're organizing together. And it's all the way from tech workers to less-paid workers to small business owners who are all coming together. And just last point that I want to make, the people who are supporting Modi are saying that our resolution is divisive. Let me tell you, it's exactly the opposite. It's the Citizenship Amendment Act and the National Register of Citizens that is deeply divisive. And actually, what they're doing is uniting people. I wanted to quote the last paragraph of P. Sainath's letter that Sujata read out, but she couldn't finish. P. Sainath says, "The one thing that can be said for the authors of these vicious laws, they have succeeded in uniting countless millions of people across the length and breadth of the land, many of whom are out there showing the world what democracy is all about." So let's remember these encouraging words. If the vote is for February 3, then, and I'm sorry because I'm out of town next Monday, but let's make sure we keep getting organized. Let's not stop here. Let's bring more people on February, and let's make sure we win this. And the next stop is, you know where? It's Bellevue City Council. Let's demand Bellevue City Council passes this.[1331.01][1331.01](APPLAUSE).
So it has been moved and seconded that the resolution be held until February 3. Are there any additional comments? Councilmember Lewis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to, first off, thank everybody here on both sides of this discussion who came out and commented publicly. It's always hard to get up in front of your neighbors and express strong opinions on these public matters. And I want to start out by saying, I didn't run for Seattle City Council to opine on matters of international relations. I certainly didn't to comment on the internal politics of India, but we as council members aren't always the people that decide what is important. The community does as well. And as you, coming out here tonight, have shown, there is massive interest in Seattle in debating and discussing this matter, and I think it is appropriate that we take it up. I do want to comment, and I think that the Iran resolution we passed earlier is a good example of this, that while I think we, on occasion, we can or should comment on matters of international relations, I think it's most proper to do it in the form of instructing our congressional delegation or instructing the federal authorities in our system that have the power to take action most immediately on addressing these concerns. I think we have a very strong partner in Congresswoman Pramila Jayapal, who has taken on leadership in this issue in the United States Congress. So I was just saying this by way of flagging for my colleagues that going forward, I would like to work on potentially strengthening the resolution going forward and structuring it more toward instructing our congressional delegation in the kind of things that we would like to see addressed. Just for the record, I believe it's House Resolution 745, but I'm not sure that Congresswoman Jayapal has introduced, that I did read this morning, that touches some of the same issues, but not all of them. The process that we went through with the Iran resolution did produce, I believe, a stronger resolution. I don't think that delaying for a little bit of time, especially on issues that I am not personally, at this moment, a proficient expert in, without further deliberation and broader consultation, and I have the humility to recognize that. I don't think that that is going to make the final product suffer. And I look forward to folks continuing to express through email their sentiment on this issue. I have gotten a considerable amount of emails from all sides of this issue over the last couple of days, and I do appreciate that feedback and that outreach, and look forward to working with my colleagues and everyone in this room in this conversation going forward for a meeting on February 3. And do support holding the ordinance or resolution.
All right. So those in favor of holding the resolution, vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, vote no.
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 I believe the motion carries, and the resolution is held until February 3, 2020.
We will be back.
All right. I look forward to seeing you again. So other business, adoption of other resolutions. Please read into the record, item three.
Agenda item three, Resolution 31927, relating to the Seattle City Council member participation for 2020 and 2021 on King County Committees, Regional Committees, State Committees, and City of Seattle Committees, and superseding Resolution 31923.
Thank you. So this resolution updates the council member assigned to the Move Seattle Levy Oversight Committee in order for it to be consistent with Ordinance 124796. Ordinance 124795 was adopted to place the levy on the ballot and specified that the chair of the city council, excuse me, can you take your conversation out front, please? We're trying to conduct business. Could you please take your conversation out front? Thank you. I appreciate it. The ordinance was passed in the past to place the Move Seattle Levy on the ballot, and it specified that the chair of the City Council Transportation Committee should sit on the Oversight Committee for the levy. The resolution also adds an assignment for the King County Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Act, I'm sorry, the Growth Management Planning Council, and it also finally removes an assignment to the Trade Development Alliance because it is no longer pending. I move to adopt Resolution 31927.
Second.
I must also now move to amend Resolution 31927, Section 1B, by substituting the council member assigned to the Advisory Council on Aging and Disability Services, to change it from assigning Councilmember Deborah Juarez to the council and swapping out for Councilmember Tammy Morales as presented on Amendment 1. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to amend the resolution, and I've addressed the amendment before us. Are there any comments? Seeing no comments, those in favor of the amendment, vote aye.
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 Those opposed, vote no. The resolution carries, and the resolution is amended. Are there further comments on the resolution as amended? Seeing none, those in favor of adopting the resolution as amended, please vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, vote no. The motion carries, the resolution is adopted as amended, and the chair will sign it. Is there other business to come before the council? Councilmember Juarez.
Thank you. I respectfully request to be excused on Monday, January 27, and Monday, February 5. I will be in Portland at the Affiliated Tribes of Northwest Indians, and I'll be at the National Congress for American Indians in Washington, D.C. Should we move on that one first?
I don't, we don't vote, do we? We just, we hear them? We do hear, we do vote. Okay, I'm sorry.
Do you do them together or separate?
We can do them together.
Together? Okay. I just put them both in.
All right. Thank you. None opposed?
Nobody.
All those in favor, vote aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None abstaining?
One more note, Madam Chair. I'm designated as Council President Pro Tem for the month of February, so thank you, Councilmember Mosqueta, who will be taking my place while I'm gone on February 5.
All right. Fantastic. I believe we have another absence.
Yes. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem, Herbold. I would like to be, I mean, I would like to request to be excused on Monday, February, sorry, January 27, city council meeting.
Those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed? None abstaining? Yes, you are excused. And if there is no further business to come before the council, we are adjourned.